How much?
So I'm better staying on the fifty-five road than being on.
Let me set this.
All right, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Call this meeting. Speak a motion for approval of the agenda.
One more. Second bit.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes for the Monday, March supervisor meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that. There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number one, secondary roads. Zach Anderson. Review, approve limestone.
You set up your jack. You don't need to move that.
No, it's fine.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So we went out to get quotes from local haulers to haul limestone to our stockpile here in Carroll. Five thousand ton. We received bids back from six vendors. Teflon tower egg lime was the low quote at twenty dollars and thirty-six cents per ton. Again, this is for five thousand ton hold into our shop with one inch roadstone. What we've always used and we've done the same process. As far as I remember, Dave had done it for many years before I was here. A little bit less this year than what we have. We're trying to haul more with ourselves with our own trucks. But obviously the price did go up a little bit from last year of the rocket and the trucking both. But overall.
Last year, do you remember?
Seventeen ninety-nine is what we were at last year.
Holy crap.
Which I'm actually surprised that we got the quotes we did. I say, I thought it could have been even higher than what it was. I was expecting worse, I guess. Because even even this the rock itself went up. If I remember right, between seventy cents and a dollar a ton. So the balance of that would be the the trucking increase, which what fuel is done. Relatively happy with that quote, so.
How many tons is this, Zach?
Five thousand. I think it's broken out. I think it's three thousand ton by May first and then the additional two thousand by the first, so. It's really kind of downtime work or whatever you want to call it. We try to catch them on that on that side, I guess, so.
So do you have much of this on hand right now?
Um, if I had a guess, we have maybe four thousand ton on hand. So I had a guess, we hauled quite a bit last fall, no, full well knowing the price is going up in January. So we held what we could last fall before all the kids, so. But we'll definitely be on some to spring ourselves as well. One time allows and but it worked for us, so.
Do you know where the pit, where does this come out of?
Um, so there's two approved pits, the the Piddick player from Stratford gravel. And then Martin Marietta's pit there by Ford Dodge are the two approved ones. I'm not a hundred percent sure where this is coming from.
So can.
I haven't talked to the two. Historically, they've called out a Martin Marietta, but I I guess I can't tell you that for sure on this one. I know the price difference between the two is become a little bit more. It's like seven miles difference. So it was a little closer for Martin Marietta always, but the prices difference is getting enough now that that might make a difference.
Please come inside dump or truck them up or both.
Whatever they have, whatever they have, they kind of, it kind of, kind of depends on what I think they use it as back hauls like at the end of the day and sometimes they'll haul more than that, but just depends on their situation where they're at. They they do have both.
Does this do it? Did it include them pushing up on the pile?
No, we do that with our with our lower.
And. Sometimes that's in there too.
Right, right. Nope, we we always tell them we're gonna do that since we're right there, so.
How much cheaper is our stuff down south? I know it's not as good of material.
I don't know that it's any cheaper than this. Maybe it was maybe maybe a little bit. I haven't checked the price lately, but.
We don't, I'm not. I'm just curious.
I think from a
We don't want it.
From a trucking standpoint, I don't think we'd be any better either. I think it could be, I haven't figured out the miles, but I think it's maybe a little further yet that way even.
Is that Madison County?
Comes out of down by, well, two different boats, either over this or down by towards Logan. But that stuff is softer. That doesn't last.
It's it's definitely not the same quality limestone as what you get out of Ford Dodge. We don't have any other questions. I ask for approval of that.
We have a motion for five thousand ton of road, one inch roadstone for twenty thirty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve with the proof deep dollar egg lime as a vendor. To hold five thousand tons of one inch roadstone in.
Well, second. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Department update.
A couple of things. One, I wanted to give a quick update on our bridge project. They got the beer piles drove and the encasedments forward for that on the south of south pier. They're working on, gonna start driving pile for the south abutment this week, probably maybe tomorrow. And the weather's kind of slowed things down for them, hitting this here a little bit with some of the moisture we've gotten, but they're continuing moving forward, so. Nothing out of the ordinary there, I guess. That's just where they're at. Secondly, we have a mechanic that is leaving us. We'll be looking for to get that out in the paper here and then probably online. Hopefully by the end of the week to replace replace them. Just leaving for a different opportunity, so. H C C and leave, but that's part of the deal and we'll see what's out there.
So he's going on someone his own or?
Yes, yes.
So you're looking for a full-time mechanic?
Yeah, we're replacing the place in the full-time mechanic with a full-time mechanic.
Any questions for that?
And it's pretty, pretty, I mean, it's a pretty important role just from a standpoint. We got those trucks coming this summer. Those are the two guys that are building these, so put them together, so. Will when we have will be quite busy if we will find one, so.
Yeah.
So.
Have you had luck when you run ads the last couple of times?
Um, the last one we hired, the last mechanic we hired, I think we had four applicants, maybe. There's a couple of them that were more reasonable.
Yeah.
But it it's definitely a lot harder to find mechanics than it is equipment operators. They're they're definitely fewer of them out there and and they're being sought after by a lot of private industries as well.
So do you have specifications on them, like any training that they have to have or any?
Um, not really. We we're just looking at what they have for experience. I mean, we're not saying they have to. I I have to look at the job description again, Gene, to be honest with you, to see what's in there. I think there's, I don't know if it's required, but it's preferred is the way we put it, I believe. But I'd have to double check the down description on that. I guess definitely look look at if someone has any experience working on trucks. That's a big, big plus. The one mechanic we do have came from an ag place. That's not a bad thing either. I mean, that kind of slides over to the heavy equipment side, so. I guess depending what, really, I guess there's not a lot. We just don't get to have a lot to pick from sometimes, so we're we're it depends on what we get for applicants.
I do have one other thing. I'm not gonna mention any names, but the ones at the Farm Bureau meeting. The one of the directors down in Kuma was brought up, this person's name. And so he does a hell of a job. So I'm one of these kind of guys. So I've said before, crap goes uphill and goes downhill both ways, so.
Yep.
But I I do, when I hear comments like this, I do like that. I do like to master it all.
Appreciate that.
So make sure that that was mentioned.
I will.
On these, these two.
And we we do have a lot of those guys that are in the outshops, kind of taking care of their own territory, doing their thing. They take a lot of pride in their in their territory and what they do, so it's it's good to hear that coming back on the other side.
This is not the first time.
No, he's, he's always been a very there's just nothing ever worry about. He takes care of what he needs to take care of and he went back. So appreciate that. Appreciate that, Phil. And that's all I got unless there's any other questions.
Questions for that? Thank you.
That's amazing. Don't put it in the minutes, man.
Number two. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Number two, payables. Five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
I had some questions, but I have had them answered. If there's no other questions, I will make a motion every pay or even payables with five hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. I'll second that motion. There's been a motion and a second to approve payables. All those in favor signify by aye. Oh, I opposed, motion carries. Number three, canvas, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, special elections.
Courtney. I think on this reading, it's interesting too. So the first one I'm gonna do is Glenn Rawston Community Schools, special election proposition G. So they had, we had one polling place in Glidden, so the results are sixty-five, yes, zero, no. So they had a total of sixty-five voters for five point one eight percent.
Say that again, I didn't.
Sixty-five, yes, zero, no. So.
We need a motion to do these. Okay, perfect.
So that was just a revenue purpose statement, special election, so not a bond issue or anything, so didn't generate a lot of interest.
I'll second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the election results. Canvas, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I'm gonna pass these around. You can sign them as you're going along with the air, but there's several of them.
Actually, we got a couple of minutes still in the agenda item, which we can skip all different needs to. Do I sign as chairperson?
No, you can just leave that one blank.
We're just doing the exact same.
That's not worth taking any of that option money.
Yeah.
Now, last year, we lost the option to lower it up and it's kind of deceiving the students, yeah.
And the same thing might happen this year.
That's interesting.
So we're gonna skip number four and number five and move on to number six, set public hearing for fiscal year twenty-four, proposed property tax.
All right, so I believe
Get out your magnifying glass.
I know, I know. Well, I'm not, we're not in order here, so I gotta find out.
That's what I do.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's so small that it's all printed up the Department of Management's website. So after all the changes you all made last week, I went in and I changed everything. Updating the sheriff's office and jail, updating the revenue in the jail, which probably is the biggest offset, you know, why it looks so much better going around and then obviously some minor changes here and there, but this is the maximum amount of money that the county can levy for in fiscal twenty-four as it sits now. So if we set the hearing and go ahead and publish this, we can lower that to any amount you want, but we can't increase it. So I feel pretty confident that we can go ahead and set the hearing, knowing that you guys have reviewed everything, made that's where you thought necessary and that this number probably will go down if we decide to offset the levy with some local option money.
So this is at four twenty-two for general and three thirty-one for rural.
Was it on there?
Yep.
Tiny print somewhere?
Yeah, I'm.
Yep, you're right. Four twenty-two and three.
Oh, I see. I was trying to find the line of the sun. Yeah. This is a little deceiving, like Gene said earlier, it does not include the debt service.
Or you say the four twenty.
That's not required to be. The debt service is basically right in line with where we were last year anyways, but.
Why they came up this form? Because it never used to include mental health or debt services. Fictitious. Figure.
There is no more mental health, correct?
All right now, right?
And our debt service is roughly point six nine.
Um, yeah, it's like just over a million dollars total.
So we need a motion to set a public hearing for two weeks from today, correct?
Yeah, I'm proposing for March twenty-seventh at nine thirty.
I'll make that motion.
March twenty-seventh?
At nine thirty.
There's a motion. There's been a motion and a second to set public hearing for March twenty-seventh at nine thirty on the proposed property tax levy rate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
I'm sorry.
I was, I am for sure. Motion carries. Manure management updates. Betty finisher farm four-year plan. Twin Rivers pork, change crop rotation or optimum yields, use manure analysis. Committee reports.
I can go. Ask me. Okay, so we had a uh, who's it? Probably the assessor meeting for the setting the budget for the assessor. Um. Wednesday, I missed the soil and water because of that weather, so we went to ICAC on Thursday last week. Meeting. And that is it for me.
You have anything coming up this week? No.
I can go next if you want me to. Get voice. Okay. Last week, I did in the conference board by Zoom. And was not able to go to seat, uh, through time, because of other personal issues I had going on. And we attended ICAC Thursday and Friday. Months of several meetings. Love to we had issues with secondary road opportunities. A lot of us putting the county on the map, issues, a lot of talk on tourism. So that was that. This week I have I have new opportunity executive board meeting on Wednesday and I got Chillicothe Growth Partners executing me on Thursday and also I think the executive board is going to meet with staff members of the Senator Ernst, the new change of staff members.
You invited that?
Yeah, Thursday.
And then on Friday, I am, I'm pretty sure I have a yes, center board meeting of a chair too.
I can go next. Last Monday, after our long budget session, I went to look at our disaster recovery site under construction. Tuesday was the assessors meeting at five P M. And I did attend the regular meeting of Carroll County Growth Partnership at lunch. Thursday, Friday, I was with Gene and Mike and Stephanie in Des Moines at the ICAC Spring Conference. This week I do have the Senator C C G P meeting with Senators representative on the on the sixteenth. That's all.
I'm gonna get more of the status online, so I'm still getting amplomed with it. So I did reach out to Sarah with Hazmat and she's gonna be getting back to me, sorry, Anderson, on when we're gonna meet for that. Child cares a lot until next Monday. The safety committee, I reached out to Ken and he said that's basically not existed. Just saying that.
Do you have to do that for insurance purposes, Courtney?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's non-existent. That should not be non-existent.
Well, they don't need.
Yeah, they have not been meeting. Our work comp insurance company likes us to have safety meetings every quarter, maybe just kind of give updates on any injuries or any issues. But they haven't, I think they got away from it during COVID and have it when they've gotten back into it, so.
But for our rating, I think it's best that we take continually.
Maybe I'll send this. And let's see, I have the nine one one too. Saying they only need a couple of times a year. So.
I think they just approved the budget. Were you in on that one? You nine one one?
No, you went to that one. The only one I'm still need to reach out to some of those partnerships for families. Do you know how to contact us or that?
Uh, yeah. Sidney Grubau.
Yeah, Sidney Grubau. I don't know if I even ever remember. And they they don't need that all. I think it's like every other month or something like that, maybe. I don't know why I'm saying that.
Thank you.
Courtney, do you have anything for next week?
I don't have my book with me. I don't have anything right now. You gotta get out of here, so I will send Emily in to the last thing.
Five minutes. Good luck, Courtney. Can we go into recess for five minutes? We need a motion.
We want to do that. Last time we did that, they shut us off.
Boris, don't shut us off. We're just going into recess. Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, make a motion. My second that.
All in favor going into recess, say aye.
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 Better make sure to put that in the minutes.
Turn it on, right? Right now.
It's nine thirty. We need public hearing for fiscal year.
Not sure.
It's nine thirty. We're going back into open meeting. Item number four on the agenda is public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment.
There been any written comments?
No.
I heard nothing.
And nobody oral, no, nobody oral online.
To explain this, so. The biggest dollar amount on this budget amendment was ambulance health insurance was missed on the Dollar amount on the budget amendment was ambulance, health insurance was missed on the uh. When we approved the budget and that amount being transferred is a hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. Um, conservation also. Um, has a half year of the new naturalist on it. And our property insurance went up starting January one. Roughly forty thousand dollars, so those are the, the main items.
So the difference in between receipts and expenditures that formed.
Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, forty-six dollars. Forty-six. So with no public comments, no oral or written comments, I'll close the public hearing at nine, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is closed at nine thirty-two. And with that, we need a motion to approve. The amendment for fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Corporation resolution.
Corporations resolution. It will be, okay.
If we need a second, I'll second it. Roll call.
Gene.
Yes.
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 And being as we did the maximum levy already. That doesn't mean we're done with the budget yet.
No.
Courtney's gonna do some movement, some local options, dollars, so we can change this, but. We can do anything up to that point of our reg- regular public hearing, so we're good to go here.
Um, do you have the hard copy to sign, the official one? With that, um, yeah, that completes today's meeting, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Well, most of them do adjourn Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'll second that, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
I'd love to drag this out.